This conference will now be recorded.
Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, our monthly meeting. And before we even start with the roll call, I would just like to take a minute to acknowledge longtime member Mary Benton, who passed away last week. And I'll ask Josh if he could give us a short prayer in her honor.
Sure. Father, we thank you for bringing us together. We thank you for our, uh, our dear friend Mary, for the life that she had and the time that she committed to the city. Father, we pray for her family as she's, uh, she's going to be missed by them too. So they go through their grief process, just to give them encouragement. While we're at it, just be with us in this meeting tonight, hope the discussion to go well. Be with you according to your will. Jesus name.
Amen. Thank you. So we'll start with our final roll call with Mrs. Benton.
Sure, Mary Benton. Lloyd Colston.
Here.
Brandon Jellings.
Present.
Ian Coon. Kyle Lewis.
Here.
Cody Richardson.
Here.
And Tom Wheatley.
Here.
Good deal. And consent agenda, let's, um, have a motion accepted minutes from January, please.
I make a motion accept.
Thank you. Motions are accepted and now we need to acknowledge our great public. We have a gentleman here who is, uh, feel free whatever, you have three minutes and you state your name and city address, like to hear from everybody.
I have nothing to say. I just wanted to come and
That's fine, too.
See what the planning commission has. Most of you know me, Ken Herrer, lifelong resident of this town, this city.
Welcome, Ken.
I'm glad to be here.
Great. This will close the public portion of the meeting. And consideration now is Josh take over for our finalization of the comprehensive plan.
Sure. Well, um, at the last meeting, um, I was directed to try to go back through what we discussed and see if we needed to change any of the plan. Well, what I did, um, there was a couple of topics there that weren't strongly covered in the plan. And so, and one of those was housing, a housing plan. Mr. Cybert spoke about possibility of developing specific plans for specific areas. And one of the areas mentioned was the property, uh, well, he was talked about sleep addition for a while. And also, um, that hundred and one acres that was brought up last night. So what I put in there was, I just added a goal at the end. That was the only change that I made with that. And I just basically said, under the goal to encourage the availability of housing for all ages and income groups, I added a goal or an action that said, consider developing housing plans for a specific area to target. So it wasn't real, uh, I didn't spell out those. Housing plans are something that other cities do for, for neighborhoods like that. So we could look into that. Speaking of the, and I might as well tell you since we're on that topic anyways, the city commission has applied for a series of grants to develop that hundred and one acres that was brought up at the last meeting. One of those grants will help pay for that property and also will help put in the infrastructure. So the streets, the water, the sewer. And then a second grant would be applied for in the future that would help, it was a moderate income housing grant. And that will help to pay, uh, help provide down payment assistance for the residents that may be purchasing it. So there's, there's a process at play and of course, the plat would still have to come before the planning commission and that properties would have to be properly zoned and annexed. So all of that will come, um, before you. And we'll, we'll go through that process. So not necessarily a housing plan, but there's a, going to be a process that will go through to make sure that it meets the rest of our plan. So.
But nonetheless, then brought before the plant, uh, the commission again. Has never been announced again at a meeting?
Not officially the purchase, I don't think, but there will be some, some more talking about.
Yeah, the last ring filed for grants to do, um, oh, what's that? Housing development out there, forest land two? So that's what, that was talked about, developing that little area there.
Yeah.
Now they're talking about developing the whole area.
I think what the idea is, is to go ahead and get the entire property all at once under city ownership. And so yes, they're talking, they're talking about that property as a whole. But this development is not going, this particular one is only going to be that small, what we've done, forest land two.
Right, right, right.
It could call, because I'm going to ask. And that part of it will come before here too. So. Does anybody have a question about that addition that I put in there? Are you concerned about that? Or feel like I missed something else that we want to have in there? No? The other real topic, there, there was quite a bit of topic about how we get the message out. I obviously didn't really put that in the plan. But the other topic that came up was the library. That's been a discussion for a number of, well, yeah, a couple of years. And so what I did, not to necessarily say, oh, we need a new library. What I decided would be maybe more appropriate, and the only place I could figure to put this was in chapter five and under the historic preservation section. Because that building, of course, is historic and the historic history, that's going to affect anything that happens to it. And clearly it needs, it needs some work. And so what I suggested in this action under that goal to promote the maintenance and preservation of historical resources was to add a action that says, develop a facility plan for the historic public library. Look at their deferred maintenance, uh, look at possible expansion options. And look at the possibility of relocation, all in one plan. I think if we could have a plan like that, uh, that would help a lot. It would help make a better decision. I don't know, Lloyd, you're on the library board, right?
Yes.
Does that sound like something that would be reasonable for the library to, to look at?
Yes, but I will add that, but it always comes down to money. So.
Absolutely, absolutely. But that may be a way to put it forward to see the money.
Right.
See what a new library would actually cost, what, um, dealing with the deferred maintenance would cost, what dealing with, uh, just expanding the current facility. Cause I've heard all, all three possibilities. The deferred maintenance needs to be taken care of regardless. It, it windows in particular, uh, they need to do some work on the windows and, uh, they have issues with that later all the time, that sort of thing. And there's some ADA issues that they probably need to deal with beyond just the elevator. They don't have enough room, well, that's more of an expansion thing. They don't have enough room in the basement to do what they want to do. There is quite a bit of land to the north of the library. They have their parking lot and then the city, the city owns the parking lot to the north of that. So they could expand that too. That's, that's the other thing, because Mrs. Schout spoke at length about us needing that and she had some good points about, um, the services of the library combined. Especially when it came to helping people get air and access to like get to our packets. So.
So I know we had a similar topic on the, the rec center and that. I don't remember right off the hand, do we have a similar line item for it? Cause it's almost the same thing that deferred maintenance, the expansion, the new one, all the, the same topics for the rec center were kind of discussed, um, way back when, probably close to a year ago when we went through that, but I don't know, we almost need the same.
Probably would.
Almost, almost a word for word line item for it, if that's part of the plan. I don't, I mean.
I think we could add that. There's, the actions for, that are kind of related to that was, we talked about dealing with that Wilson Park master plan that we developed, maybe doing a master plan for other parks as well, including Paris.
Yeah.
And beyond that, that, well, there was one that was talking about funding for parking. But yeah, there's nothing real specific to that other than the pool facility plan that was done, uh, that's obviously related to that.
Yeah.
And beyond that, the rec center, I don't have a shirt, they may have a plan like that already.
Okay, we could, I don't know, I just sound like a really, a really similar thing under the building that's old, that doesn't work, that was going to cost a fortune. Would be nice to have a new one, but where do you get the money?
And what do you do with that building?
Right, yeah, then you abandon if you're a big building.
Same, same thing with the library. What would happen with that building?
If you voted to destroy the current library, it should, if it's not, should be under, uh, this core building.
But that what it is.
That, that. The library is.
The rec center, the rec center is not.
While you're talking about the library, the fire station is in the same boat. Our department needs a new fire station, uh, because two things, one, that facility is old and the other thing is the city's growing bigger than the fire station was designed to cover the turf.
Right.
And there's, the fire station has got some internal, um, discussion about how to go, the fire chief has been working on some.
They got a big mold problem too. It's unsafe.
He's got a good plan though, the new fire chief.
I think he's, he's got that under.
He's got a good plan.
They've got a masters in it too. So he's got a lot of access.
Yeah.
Fire science.
So would we like to add an auction maybe?
Excuse me. Don't worry about the library. I think it went to auction. It could do well. That'd be interesting. It's a cool building.
Yeah.
Anyway.
No, I just want to throw that out. I, and I think we kind of, kind of covered, like you said, it wouldn't actually fall into the historic section like library does.
Even technically that front building would most likely be eligible.
Just for the red shirt, but it's not. Not currently in that category.
I think it was built in the forties, something like that.
Doesn't land have a plan to build a rec center off of them?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, they have a.
He came and pitched that early on when we went through that chapter. He came and kind of went through his whole plan and, uh, mentioned that. It was kind of similar to the one we have, it's outdated and all the, kind of the same topics on rec centers, library.
Other than that, I don't have anything to add. We'll take the discussion.
Anyone else? Get ready to go, Lloyd. Okay, we'll move on to other items. Anything not covered? I got one item. Just to cover on, uh, a reference to a January fourth, uh, city commission meeting where the only people there, Brandon was there and I was there. When, uh, residents were upset about what's going to happen with the parcel, we discussed two parcels. And the input mostly from, uh, Mr. Cyber, that a lot to say about it. And I thought they had it under control, whether they're really going to shelf it or whatever, you know, table it for a while. And, um, so we met five days later and he shows up and he's giving us the same points and frustrations to us, which is out of our scope. And I was kind of, I, I didn't say anything because that was, we worked on this all year long. It was the public's turn to say something. So I was kind of surprised. No one came and had anything on that. We heard about lady from wants a new library and we heard about that gentleman about, um, the parcel valuation and what to do with it. And, uh, you know, it's kind of like getting scolded by my dad in high school. I didn't appreciate it. So I had, um, the next day, planning commissioner called me and said, did anyone show up to comment on your comprehensive plan? I said, no, but they make some other points, a little sound like the same meeting as we had five days ago at your city commission. I've been a handful of those. And, uh, well, they said, well, write it down. I'm going to keep track of this. Okay. So I had met Ian for breakfast and I, and I made a couple of points on this and he agreed with it. I basically wrote the letter and then, uh, city commissioners took it out of confidence and read it into the minutes, the next city commission meeting, which I didn't appreciate, handed it to him. And, um, it was a summation in a, on one page. It wasn't fair really to what they wanted to get across, but it should have been confidential and it wasn't coming from the planning commissioners is what I want to say. When I said we and us was just me and Ian. And we, I don't think it was important enough to call everyone to make a big deal about it. Commissioner wanted an update on this and it spun into that. So we were just making a summary as we saw fit and just want to make sure all the other planning commissioners were aware. You know, excluding anyone was not the attention, intention of anyone got that. So that's all I had on. If anyone had any questions, there's a copy of the letter here at Brock. I want to review it. Um, that was it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm in, I was, I was there and they looked at me and said, do you know about this? And I, the signature wasn't clear whether it was, it says just two names. So you could read like it's just the two names. I, it didn't, it didn't bother me in any way, but I just.
Well, they called you there.
Yeah, they, they.
They called him to debunk your letter. I mean, it was a roundabout.
Listen to the.
Cause it wasn't signed.
It was a roundabout.
Just, they read it like, this is from the commission. So then they looked at me and said, do you know about this? And I said, I did not. And then they're like, so anyway, I.
Okay.
I think, I think because the two of you were the president, vice president, it kind of read like the whole thing, you know what I mean?
A little confusion.
Just because it said the commission, vice president, president, that sort of read that way. So it was kind of like, well, which way did they mean it?
Right.
But I.
And the main thing, it's none of that was in our arena. You know, we get to that when they go to build something, of course, and we do. But, uh, that's between city government and what they want to use and purchase and when business is on them.
They're still a little sore that they got caught with their hand in cookie jar, the commission.
I understand.
So a letter like that was like, don't tell us our job.
May I say something?
Yeah.
Sure.
I was surprised when Madam Mayor introduced that. And I feel like it was a good thing because in years past, under a different administration and Josh was here, Josh and I have had a lot of conversations. The city has tried to sneak stuff through and of course, I didn't find out about it till later, even though I would go in and talk to them. And they'd hold stuff from you and wouldn't tell you. And then you might've been standing there in the hallway. I know Josh was, Brandon was.
Yeah.
I had a staffer telling me Ken, if you knew everything, if the city lets you know what's going on, we couldn't get nothing done. And man, that has never left me. That is why I attend more meetings, go to more commissioner meetings. I'll go in and talk to the manager once in a while. I talk to Josh. I, I'm not scared of him anymore. You know, I lived my whole life raising a family, putting kids through school, counting nickels to cover all the bases and let the city run. But as I got retired and had time to listen and read and, and then after a situation where I live, got more involved. So I don't think anybody is sore at the planning commission. No, nobody's sore at the commissions. It's they have questions because what's happened in the past. And some of you may not be aware of that, or you was never involved in it. And, uh, we had a triad here for a while. Manager, city attorney and the chief of police. They're not here no more. And the chief we have now, I think is fabulous sometimes. My boy went to school with him and I have a lot of respect for Mr. Burke. I can email him. I can go to him. The last chief you had wouldn't even talk to me. I thought one day he was going to have me in handcuffs in the chief, in the police station there. He wouldn't let me talk to him. That's how bad it got. And I thought, man, I need to walk out of here. I'll be handcuffed and in the cell back there. So I think our city's had kind of a bad past, but I think we've moved beyond that. And I'm hoping and I'm seeing, and I, I think I can walk up to any one of them commissioners now and talk to them. Where before I didn't feel like I could do that. I just wish there's more people in the community. But they're like I was, it hadn't, they hadn't been kicked in the pants yet or something, you know? And we just want to know what's going on, bring it out to us, let us know. And that hadn't happened. That's why I asked Josh here at the last planning commission, was just who was wanting to revolve this hundred and one acres through and get a vote on it. That's first I'd ever heard of. So that's why I'm here. That's why I ask questions and, and I have nothing, you know, anybody on this board. I think some of you were taken by surprise, big time. So.
Yeah, I appreciate, as a commissioner, I appreciate your comments just now. But as a commissioner, and I'm, I can't speak for, I won't speak for everybody. But I have been over forty years in government and state federal and local government service as an employee. And I've sat on this commission and I've sat on other boards, um, expecting my city to follow all the rules and I've not caught them. No, and I have not caught them yet not following the rules. I don't want to have to, I don't want to have to micromanage a department.
Yeah.
I expect the expectations that were expected of me as an employee was that I was going to show up, do my job and make the world a better place.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm on this commission. I'm going to show up and be a commissioner. And I will certainly challenge any department that is not following the rules.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to micromanage any of them, let there.
I had my attorney in Wichita telling me about seven years ago. He said, Kenny, you can't fight the city. You can't sue them. Cause I felt bad over my situation, but he said, what you can do is go to the meetings. Be involved, speak up, ask questions, get people to go. That's how you bring it out.
And that's my heartburn with the city because I see Facebook and I see the comments from our residents and non-residents that don't pay attention to the meeting announcements.
Yeah.
Well, when was that decided? That was decided January the fourth at six.
I heard a lot of that in the last two months. And I know some people don't want to do the computer. Luckily, that was never a problem for me. One thing I mentioned, I don't know if I told Josh and I probably need to bring it up to the city manager, but your legal notices, Josh, when you put them in the paper is kind of after the fact. The commission's done voted on rezoning and stuff, but you can't.
No, there's no, when I put a public notice into the newspaper for a public hearing, it's twenty days in advance of the meeting.
Okay. Well, the, the new lady you have that's took, uh, Andrew Lawson's job, I talked to her down here that night. And why can't those be put on your website, on the city website also? I meant to bring that paper tonight. There really isn't anybody here. You can't read it. It's so fine. And then I've got to get my light on it.
It is, it's on red.
Why can't you put that in your, on your website?
As a newspaper publisher. One more problem, I've done that too.
Yeah.
The legal notices in the mail are by law defined to be such and such type. So you can't read them.
Right.
Especially if you're old.
Right, exactly.
And that was my point at the last meeting. We have to follow the law.
Right.
We can't make up a new law just to serve one or segment of society. It has to be everybody.
Well, can it legally be posted on the city's website, those notices?
As of now, we still have to do the newspaper.
Right.
Now adding it to the website, that's above and beyond. That's, and it's certainly allowed. But it's not, it doesn't meet the statute requirement.
Right, right. I understand that. This is just information for people that will go to the computer.
You can do more than the law allows.
Right.
All sorts, put it in the paper. But, um, follow me on Twitter and I'll tweet them.
Well, I just felt like you could put it, you're, you're directing people to go to the website congenially out here. You go to the website. Well, let's have it on there. I read that one today. It involved, uh, rezoning and everything. But I struggle to read it because it's so small.
Okay. What you saw was the ordinance.
Right.
That was officially passed.
Right.
In order to do the rezone.
Right.
Yes, that is out of the.
Right. But if that's something you can run by somebody, uh, that would be information you can say, well, I didn't see that. Well, we've got it on the website. I don't take the paper no more. You know?
And say, and even if you don't, if you, even if you do what the law says, you don't take the paper anymore. So you don't have to read it.
Yeah, well, let's have it, let's have it on another side.
We're also going to be better about getting them in the newsletter on the back of the water bill.
Right.
So that will help with that. I don't think it'll be a problem for me at all to put public notices, at least on my section, the neighborhood services page of the website. I can do that. And, and actually that public hearing was on that portion of the website. That there was a notice because I created a special page where people could read that.
Now Andrew had me on his email list. Anytime the city was doing anything or the planning commission, it sent out an email.
And I missed that.
And more people can request, I would think, can you get me on your email?
Yep.
Cause a lot of people, if they do a computer at all, they'll read their emails before they delete them.
I can add you to my distribution.
I would appreciate that. After Andrew left, I, I wasn't getting off of that place. That's, I'll quit talking. That was just some things that I thought might help. Yeah.
So real quick, kind of back to the same topic. Just for, I guess, my understanding, and I know there's some that haven't been on here too long and, and I don't know that as long as, in a couple of years I've been on this, we've really talked about the exact roles of this planning commission. You know, should a, a large purchase be mentioned here? Is that, that's not really, that's not really something that has to come through here at all. As long as it meets our master plan.
Right.
Really doesn't need.
Anything the city commission does should at least have a passing glance at the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it really should.
Yeah, I mean, when they came in here and asked, you guys know anything about it? You should know, like, technically there's, it's not really part of our role that we would have to be informed of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I want to say that he was on a roll. So I was like, okay.
I, I think the most important part was, nobody knew.
Right.
It's kind of like me buying a house and making you pay for it.
Right.
And you know, I'm going to, I'm going to go buy the house, take out a loan, put your social with it and expect you to pay for it. That's what they want to do with this land. In fact, what shocked me is they already had the bond writer there that night, ready to write the bond. It was a done deal. If a few of us didn't show up and voice our concerns.
Right.
That's what was so alarming.
Right, not that they didn't.
No, I didn't care if the gains are us. I don't care. It was, it was a matter of fact that they tried to buy a hundred and one acres. And what really chapped me is, I've already tried to buy that land. I've already been in negotiations with that land. And so for them to use my tax dollars to buy land that I could already purchase, just kind of rubbed me the wrong way. And it rubbed, obviously a lot of the town the wrong way also. So where else are they going to go to us? Because, I mean, they want, they want a voice. So, and they weren't there that night. So ours, ours was the next meeting. So they were going to come to our meeting and voice their concerns here.
Right.
So it wasn't about them coming through us.
Right.
It was the fact that they were trying to do something shady and that they had a bond writer there that night to write that stinking bond to use my tax dollars to buy land.
Yep.
So that they don't, I don't know if anybody knows, the city has zero dollars. City is.
That's right.
It.
Yeah.
If I was in the city's financial position, the bank would not give me any money to do anything. I mean, that's how bad it is.
Right now, Josh.
So.
I'm not the best person to answer that.
So anyways, it's, it's like, you know, we don't have money to be buying extra stuff.
That goes back to what they told me a few years ago. And that's why I still got hot this last time this thing come up.
As the commissioner who has had four years of government service. As the commissioner who has had four years of government service. I expect the city to be open and honest with the stuff. And the question about how, how bad is city financial situation? I wouldn't have problems at all, and they still yet do it. And I called the city finance director on the phone and asked questions and got answers. The city, at least to me, is that transparent? If you have a question about the police department. I have the same experience you've had in walking in the office and knocking on the door and saying, anybody here answer a question for me? And they'll do it, fire department, same thing. Everybody, I've been in Josh's office, haven't I? More than once, didn't fall asleep in there, but I was there. And the idea, we, we have a government that is open to the citizens that it serves, in my experience. So call the finance lady and say that we broke.
All you can do is come to a commission meeting, they lay it out.
I know.
Yeah.
The last workstation that I attended, Madam Mayor brought up, she had people from the city call her. How come we didn't get our fifty cent rates? And our city manager had to answer that question. I didn't say anything, but he didn't give a good answer. And I think the reason is, don't have the money.
Don't have the money? They keep spending more than, more than they have?
One other point, I, and I'll make you guys make me shut up. If you're applying for these grants to buy that hundred and one acre. How can you approve the buy before you get the money? I mean, I was told by a commissioner, well, we hit seventy-five percent of it. And a grant, we need to take advantage of that. Well, that sounds okay, except, how can you go ahead and get it before you get the grant?
Well, and the real question you need to ask is, okay, so you got a grant for seventy-five percent. If you're broke, how are you going to pay the twenty-five percent?
Well, that's an easy question, that's an easy answer.
Really?
It's a bond, and then we pay for it.
Yeah. Okay, I won't say any more.
Good points.
I came from a city that was in, I'm sitting in city council meetings. And they're approving money. And I'm looking at what they're approving and for months, I'm going, the city's not going to do this very well. And the city manager consistently told department heads, you're not spending money, you don't have to. And you know how government works, you go in and ask for money as a department head in the budget process. And you ask for the money and you're told, you're not gonna get that much. So you have to run your department on what they give you. And then they come along and say, we're not gonna give you twenty percent. We're giving you twenty percent less. Do your, do your math on that. And I lived that life. And I hated that life, but I got my, my department ran. And one of the finance officers told me to my face, Boyd, if you were as frugal, if all the other department heads were as frugal as you are, we would have no problem here. So I do expect my city to run and spend the money wisely.
Deficit spending's pretty trendy.
Yes, what's the matter with the country there?
Yes, it is. Well, that's a whole nother discussion. Good items, any other items, gentlemen?
Well, before we go, do we want to vote on recommending other complaints?
Yes, we do.
Absolutely.
I vote we approve.
I second it.
Um, let's do a roll call on that.
Okay. Very good, it's on here.
Okay, so Lloyd Colston?
Yes.
Brendan Jelling?
Yes.
Uh, Kyle Lewis?
Yes.
Uh, Cody Richardson?
Yes.
And Tom Wheatley?
Yes.
Okay, I will start the process to forward it to the city commission, they'll be, they'll be doing that in a study session. Obviously, because they need to hear everything.
Do we need to be there?
You know what? I can put it out when we do set that up. It probably wouldn't hurt, we talked about that a little bit at the last meeting and in fact, Cody and Brandon were both at the last meeting, so that, that was good. I think that's good now. It's probably better if you don't all go.
Right.
Because then you.
Meeting.
Yes, if, if somebody wants to come to that, or if you. It'd have to be official vote or anything, but you could maybe designate somebody to go to it. Or just show up. That, that's a, those meetings are a little bit different if you've ever been on, like Ken. They're really informal.
You learn a lot.
I go to a lot of, I mean.
That's where you can get some of the.
That's right. I need to attend more.
Okay, well, um.
Move your turn.
I second that, so we are adjourned for February's meeting, thank you, John.
Next month, I'll just tell you, um, I'm bringing in the person that helped us do the last comprehensive plan. And he's going to help, uh, part of what we're doing is he's gonna help describe what the planning commission's duties are.
Okay.
As the only thing we'll focus on at the next meeting. And then in April, Lloyd has an item that he wants to bring before you, related to zoning regulations. And then if there's nothing in May, I may just have you take a break, cause it's been a long time. And then we'll get into some of the zoning regulations that, uh.
Oh, Lloyd, I spent a year going through this, is it, better be within these guidelines?